I can call a roll whenever you instruct me to.
Want to let the stream get going just a few moments? Okay. I'm seeing a whole lot of LNC members on my screen. Madam Secretary, let's go ahead and let's call this meeting to order at 9:04 PM Eastern Time. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Okay, and this time I'm going to group regionals with their alternates, so I don't need to go back. Ms. Bill Yu.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Present.
Mr. Bowen.
Here.
Ms. Ebbkey.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
I am present. Mr. Hewitt.
I'm here.
Mr. Fiera.
Right here.
Ms. Hogarth.
Here.
Mr. Valente.
Present.
Mr. Longstrath.
Present.
Mr. Nana.
I'm here.
Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall. Mr. Nikala.
Present.
Mr. Sexton.
Present.
Mr. Phillips.
Present, and Mr. Buffman has already indicated he will not be here.
Thank you. Mr. Roudseth.
I am here.
Ms. Sarwark.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Lucchini.
Here.
And I know the acting chair is here. I'm going back to Mr. Hall. Okay, Mr. Chair, it appears that Mr. Hall and Mr. Buffman are not present, but their primaries are.
Excellent. So we have quorum. Excellent. All right. Madam Secretary, and I guess the whole board, let me start by saying we're not doing public comment tonight because this is a continuation of the meeting from last night. This is not a new meeting. This is the same meeting continued. That was what we adjourned last night to this time and date. And that's why we're just picking up exactly where we left off last night, just after midnight. And if, in that vein, Madam Secretary, do you have the motion handy as amended where we left off last night?
I did. But I need to find it again. I kept bumping it up. And I know Mr. Nikala did the same thing. Yeah, here we go. Other people kept bumping it. Thank you. Do you need me to read it or bump it again? I'm going to bump it.
Yes, bump it on the list, please. Yep.
And I can post it in chat. I have to do it in chat by paragraph because it's too long to do one post.
That is fine. I just want to make sure that all the committee members can definitely see what we're doing, and then also the people in the gallery who are here can also see it.
So I'm going two paragraphs by two paragraphs into chat.
Okay.
It's in chat.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harlos. Okay.
Is Richard here? I saw his name flash for being in the waiting room.
Mr. Longstrath? Make sure.
Will you shut the doorway?
Here we go again.
All right. So where we are right now, there's a motion on the floor. We are back to discussion of the main motion. I will note that I do not remember who spoke whether in favor or against last night.
We left with Ms. Bill Yu.
Okay, and I seem to recall Ms. Bill Yu wanted to see some language about caucuses but did not have the specific language at the time. Does anyone want to speak in favor or against the motion, or of course, it is always in order to bring forth an amendment? And I see Ms. Bill Yu's hand is up, and she was the last to speak, so go ahead, Ms. Bill Yu.
Yeah, I would just move to amend to add specifically the language regarding note that not only they can't be LNC members, but they also can't be caucus members. And not just leadership, but caucus members. That's what I, what I would like to see, and it's really just adding a couple of words wherever we think is appropriate.
So if I understand your motion correctly, you are moving to amend the final sentence of the first paragraph to read, "No LNC members or caucus members shall be eligible to serve on this committee."
That would suffice, yes.
Okay, there has been a motion made. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Joshua Smith at large. I would be amenable to seconding that if the language was changed to say no caucuses as of June 6th. Since the second biggest caucus in the party, the Libertarian Pragmatist Caucus dissolved yesterday, so.
Mr. Chair, this is out of order.
Yes, it is out of order. I was just going to say there is a motion on the floor, and we are not in a caucus, a committee of the whole, so.
I will second.
That is a second by Mr. Lucchini, so we are now in discussion. Ms. Bill Yu, would you like to speak to your amendment?
I would just think it's important that if we want this to truly be an impartial investigative body, then to make sure that there are no errors from either of the caucuses that were involved or any other ones for that matter. And with regard to what Mr. Smith just said, I don't really understand what the date has to do with anything. If we know that someone was in a caucus that was involved in this thing, then that counts.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak.
And I also have my, you can't see my hand, but.
I've had my hand up first.
Oh, yeah, no, no, you were definitely first.
All right, so I have Smith, Nana, and Harlos.
And I have my hand up as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see that now, and I also see some more hands going up. All right, we've got them going up now. All right. Let's, let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Smith. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay, so the date is important to me because as of June 6th is basically the first, first time we found out about any correspondence with, with regards to the matter at hand. The Pragmatist Caucus existed then, and your amendment doesn't have language that, that talks about that. I mean, your amendment is just no caucuses, but none of those people are in the caucus anymore because the Pragmatist Caucus dissolved yesterday. So I want to make sure that if, you know, if all the caucuses are going to be excluded, then we need to also exclude the caucus that dissolved yesterday as well. And that needs to be explicit in, in the amendment. Otherwise, people just think, oh, I'm not in a caucus, you know, and then it's people who were involved in this factional thing that we're all worried about. So I just want to make sure that that is stated. That's, that's all I'm worried about.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Nana?
Thank you. So I, 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 I am with the intent of this amendment. I understand the intent. But I don't know how the heck we're going to, how are we going to police it? I mean, how do we know what defines a member of a caucus? What caucuses count? Does the Waffle House caucus count? Does, you know, the Libertarian Dad caucus count? I mean, what, what is the scope of this and how the heck do we define a member? I mean, I think, I think honestly, at this point, we're going to need to bite the bullet and go completely outside the party if we want a truly impartial investigation because, I mean, I don't know how we police whether or not you're in a caucus or whether or not you're a member or were you a member on such and such date, you know, especially now that since one of the caucuses has dissolved, we're not going to be able to demand membership rolls from a caucus. So I mean, I don't see how we even enforce this.
Stephen Nikala here.
I.
Okay, so I'm looking at the list here. Okay, so everybody's going to talk. Cool. All right, we're good. Let me, let me write these all down here, and I apologize. And again, my issue is that they don't, the hands don't always go up in the correct order. Mr. Harris, who do you see?
I can assist with order if you, if you would like.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
I see Smith, Ebbkey, Lucchini, Valente.
Okay, and I assume Smith is an artifact?
Yeah. Yeah, Smith has just lowered, so I see Ebbkey, Lucchini, Valente, Roudseth.
Nikala would also like to be recognized.
And mine has been physically raised since the beginning.
Okay. Let's see, so we've heard two, one for, two against. Okay, I'm just trying to see it. We'll just do it. All right, we'll just go on. All right. Let me, let's hear from Ms. Harlos, and then we will go down the list as the hands are shown on the electronic.
Thank you. Some of the same concerns, right? Does the Libertarian Get Naked Caucus, what about the Libertarian Alligator Caucus? We can't define this. But I have another wrinkle to add to this. According to the Pragmatist Caucus bylaws, every single member of the Libertarian Party was considered a member of their caucus because I had been complaining about being a member of a caucus without my consent since their bylaws were drafted. So nobody would be able to be, able to be in this committee. The better way is put forth good candidates, and we can vet these candidates about their background, their biases, and their potential caucus involvement. That's the way to responsibly handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harlos. Ms. Ebbkey?
Yeah, actually, I find myself in agreement with both Ms. Harlos and Mr. Nana. It's, I appreciate the intent, but I do think that we run into a bit of a problem with trying to figure out who's a member of what caucus. Because, you know, do we go based on Facebook group membership? Do we go on who's liked pages? Do we, you know, do we just do the caucus formerly known as the Pragmatist Caucus, or do we, you know, do we look at the, look at the Mises Caucus or just those two? Is it the Radical Caucus? Is it the Audacious Caucus? I mean, I think we really, we really run into a problem, and I don't know that we have any way. We don't have any authority to demand membership or mailing lists from either of those caucuses or any of the caucuses, I don't believe. So even the larger caucuses would be problematic.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ebbkey. I'm going to ask right now, of the people that have their hands up, is there anyone who actually wants to speak in favor of this motion? This amendment?
Partially.
Okay, well, you're on deck next anyway, Mr. Lucchini, so go ahead.
It's Lucchini with a hard C, just.
I'm sorry.
So I find myself in agreement with both our secretary and Ms. Ebbkey. I appreciate the sentiment. I think it's unworkable. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to remove the caucus language and substitute any LNC member or immediate past LNC member or staff. So immediate past staff, I don't know how you define that. I'd have to work on that language a little bit, but I would like to, can I make it a motion to amend the amendment?
I wish you wouldn't.
It would be out of order at this time, Mr. Moment, if you would like.
I, I tend to agree that it would be out of order. I think if, to try to make this simple and get through this as quickly as possible, let's take amendments, get only one deep. Let's dispense with it and get back to the main and see if we can get done tonight. I really want to have this hammered out tonight if we can. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Lucchini.
I, if, I will then just call the question and be done with it.
Okay, then Mr. Lucchini has called the question. Yeah. Is there?
It was a good amendment. We could have done it, but.
So. All right, question's been called. Is there a second on calling the question?
Second.
There's a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Is there an objection?
To passing the amendment, I suspect.
No, to calling the question?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Is there?
This is on calling the question.
Yep. Is there objection to calling the question? I'm not hearing any objection to calling the question, in which case then let's call the roll on the actual amendment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bill Yu.
Yes.
And everyone's clear this is on the amendment. I just, okay, thank you. Mr. Bowen?
No.
Ms. Ebbkey?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
I will vote no. Mr. Hewitt?
Can you repeat what the amendment is? I'm sorry.
It's on my other screen. Do you have it handy, Mr.? I don't want to blow up my cursor again.
Yes, the amendment is that at the end of the first paragraph where it currently reads, "No LNC members shall be eligible to serve on this committee," would be amended to read, "No LNC members or caucus members shall be eligible to serve on this committee."
Okay, I vote no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hogarth?
No.
Mr. Longstrath?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Nikala?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Roudseth?
No.
Ms. Sarwark?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Nope.
Mr. Lucchini?
No.
Mr. Chair, is two in favor, 13 opposed.
The chair will not vote. So. All right, so that means that with a vote of two to 13, the amendment fails, and we are back to the main motion.
I'd like to make a amendment.
Okay, Mr. Lucchini, your amendment?
Essentially the same language as previously with the caucus language deleted and immediate past LNC members or staff being excluded.
Okay, so I, I think what I'm hearing you say is that the amendment would read, "No LNC members, immediate past LNC members or staff."
Staff or, or immediately past staff.
Immediately past staff.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, point of inquiry?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Is it, what, aren't we going to involve staff when we, when we look through emails and stuff? Wasn't Tyler, like, initially going to be a part of it?
Well, they're acting in the direction of the investigatory body, not on it. They don't vote on it.
Okay, well, I guess if that's, it's just the committee, that makes sense, but I know that initially we were talking about having Tyler be a part of it, so.
And actually, when I say, let me amend my, well, let me rephrase mine, so.
There has not been a second, so you have the opportunity.
Okay, so where it says, "No LNC member, immediate past LNC member or anyone who has been staff for the last five years."
Okay.
Because, because immediate past staff, I have no idea what that means.
So is everyone clear what the amendment is, or do they need that reread?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion then is made by Mr. Lucchini and seconded by Mr. Hagan. We are now in discussion. Mr. Lucchini, would you like to speak in favor?
I believe that excluding LNC members is wise, but there has been historical conflicts between current LNC and some former LNC are in that area, so I think it just makes sense to broaden the scope of the exclusion to make sure that we don't have any other potential issues. I will say that I agree with Ms. Harlos, that I'm fairly certain that we will pick the appropriate people, and we don't need to over-specify the restrictions here, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lucchini. Is there anyone who would like to speak against? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull the participants back up. I see that there are four people.
Yeah, I would like to speak against, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and Mr. Harris, is Mr. Nana the first one on your list as well, or who's on your list?
I have Mr. Bowen, Ms. Adams, Mr. Nana, Ms. Ebbkey.
Adams, Nana. Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris. Let's go, Mr. Bowen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question just concerning the language. Are we saying that we are restricting anyone from, who has served on the LNC for the last five years and anyone who has been hired as staff for the last five years? I think I'm okay with that. I just want to bring to the attention of the board that are we eliminating someone who may be potentially a good, good member to, to put on that committee? I don't know the answer. I'm just want to make sure that that is the exact wording. We are going to restrict that five years back from the date that we approved the motion, and I'd like to hear people's thoughts on whether that might be too restrictive. Thank you.
I can tell you how it's worded.
Nikala here.
Hold on one moment. Mr. Lucchini, would you like to respond to that?
So I believe the way it's worded, it restricts LNC and immediate past LNC. So if you were replaced by somebody who's on the current LNC, then you would be immediately passed. So that is typically going to be a a two-year probation. We could, I am completely open to a friendly amendment to simply put a year number on it. I also think that I'm completely open to changing five years to any other time period. I am not beating the drum on this, so I would like to hear other people's opinion on those restrictions.
As would I. Thank you, Mr. Lucchini.
Next, I have Ms. Adams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know that I'm speaking against it. I don't think that it's a bad amendment, but something Mr. Nana said kind of hit home with me when he said the only way we get a truly kind of clean, fair, unbiased investigation is if we go 100% outside, and maybe, maybe that's the way to go. Initially, I supported Mr. Nikala's original motion, was, I really thought that was the way to go, and now I think maybe anybody who touches this, when, when we're talking about bias, we all have it. So maybe going completely outside of our organization is the way to go, and I know a lot of people are going to be reluctant about spending that money, but I think we're talking again about investing in the future of our party, and it might be important.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Nana?
Are we on the amendment?
We, we are on the amendment.
Okay, because that was kind of way off course.
Um, so I'm going to try to speak directly to the amendment. So I think this overcomplicates it. I think I would be amenable to, to the amendment saying something like, no past LNC member or past staff, period, and I think that would clean it up and make it a lot easier. That way, we just know who is eligible and who's not right off the bat. But, you know, as I said earlier, I think we're going to have to change this motion in a way that makes it so that no party member is a part of this investigation, period.
Thank you, Mr. Manana. Ms. Ebbkey?
My, my only concern with this is, is again, what Mr. Bowen and Mr. Lucchini have both talked about. I think that to tighten it up in this particular amendment, I think a timeframe is reasonable, five years, seven years. I don't know what the magic number is, but I think we should, we should put a timeframe on it because otherwise if we're going to go with members, we lose a fairly significant number of people who might be interested, but who haven't, you know, who, who aren't recent members, but who could deal with things fairly moderately. So I, I mean, I'd just like to see a timeframe. If we're going to say five years for staff, I would also say five years for, for the LNC member, somebody who's been out for at least five years.
Point of information?
I hear the point of information. I don't know who.
It's Lucchini. Can I withdraw this motion? Since it's been seconded?
It's not, not, technically, no. Since we're not in a committee of the whole, I don't think we can.
He can withdraw it if there's no objection.
Okay, Mr. Brown says we can be withdrawn if there's no objection. So Mr. Lucchini, are you asking for it to be withdrawn?
Yes, I am.
Okay, is there objection to this amendment being withdrawn? I am not hearing objection to this amendment proposal being withdrawn. So we are now back to the main motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak in the main motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Nikala? I don't know who's, all right, so now we've got a problem of we've got artifacts of hands raised for lots of things. Yes, so we're back to here. Mr. Harris, I actually show Mr. Nikala as the next speaker. Is, is he showing that on yours?
I do as well, followed by Mr. Longstrath and Mr. Nana.
Perfect. Mr. Nikala, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make it understood that if this motion passes the body, the LNC will choose who serves on this committee, so we could go into the details later on when we choose based on the merits of each individual who we'd like to be a part of this committee. Coming up with different amendments as to restrictions now, it's not necessary, in my opinion, because we'll be voting on the individuals later on. So I think that's up to the board anyway, so we should just focus on those merits. And for full disclosure, I did speak with Mr. Jim Turney of Florida. He is a past LNC chair. He's not a member of any caucus. He's a very
He's on the JC.
Correct, he's on the JC, as is Mr. Tom Arnold, and that will be something to be discussed. There's also others who I know that I believe others on this committee have spoken to who are also willing to serve on this investigatory committee. So we can definitely speak to the merits of those individuals, but there are those that I believe would be very well fit to, to serve on this, on this committee that have agreed to do so. So I just wanted to make that apparent to the board and that we all understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Mr. Longstrath?
Yes, I would move to require that any person that the LNC commits be a minimum of a member for five years in the party in good standing.
All right, let me see here. So that will be trying to see.
A second.
I'm trying to see where that's going to fit into this motion.
It would be in the same place as all of these other qualifiers would be, so it'd be, you know, everywhere else we've been considering this. Right at the end of, I believe, the second paragraph, give me a second. Let's see. I'll point out that yesterday, this wasn't so much a concern figured out. So it looks like it's actually at the end of the first paragraph where it says, "No LNC members shall be eligible to serve on this committee." I would also add a sentence that reads, "Anyone selected must be a member in good standing of the National Party for a minimum of five years."
And I seconded that.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to amend, add the sentence, and please correct me if this is incorrect. Anyone selected must be a member in good standing of the National Party for a minimum of the last five years.
Correct, that is my motion.
Okay. And it has been seconded, and so, Mr. Longstrath, would you like to speak to your motion?
I believe it is somewhat self-explanatory, but I will go ahead and speak on it. The, the fact of the matter is, is this is a, a movement that has come up in the party. The result of this election that happened in March was because of new people that ran for the board who previously were not involved. I would like to be as impartial as possible, and short of hiring our own private investigator or going outside of this group, the best way that we can try and gauge any sort of independence are people who have been with this party for a certain amount of time and who have seen the ebb and flow of how these things work. And I think that it is imperative that us as a group recognize that experience in this party is the only way that we might actually get some sort of an unbiased decision, again, absent hiring a private investigator or, or something similar. So that is why I am pushing this, and I would encourage my fellow committee members to do the same.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Longstrath. Mr. Harris, I see in my queue, now it's Mr. Lucchini is at the top, then Nana, then Rodseth. How do you have them on yours, since mine keeps jumping?
I have Mr. Nana, Mr. Lu.
I have Mr. Nana, Mr. Lucini, and then Mr. Rodsepp.
All right. Mr. Nana, are you speaking against this motion? Okay, then, Mr. Nana, you are recognized.
Um, I have the floor, right?
You do, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, so here's the thing. We can sit here and argue over, over these amendments all night. We can come up with arbitrary, um, rules about who can serve and who can't. Nikala, Mr. Nikala said something earlier that, that I do also agree with. You know, it's going to eventually be up to us to decide. At the same time, I think we, uh, we're never going to get this hashed out through an email ballot, in my opinion. So, um, I, I, I personally would not support this amendment because it's just muddying the waters even further. Again, whenever I get the chance to have the floor first and we get back to the main motion, I'm going to have an amendment in my eye.
Thank you, Mr. Nana. Uh, Mr. Lucini, are you speaking in favor of the amendment?
Yeah, it's on, uh, yes, I am.
All right, then, Mr. Lucini, you are recognized.
Um, so I think this is a rational thing to do. One thing I will note, I believe that there is nothing that would preclude this committee from hiring a PI to do some of its work, right? So, um, we can have both with this motion without specifying excessive amount of restrictions on the committee members. So I, I'd like to, as soon as we're, uh, I guess there's a couple more people, but let's just, uh, let's vote on this and move on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Harlos.
Um, point of personal privilege.
Go ahead.
There is a very important email having to do with the entire situation that's in our inbox that I really believe the LNC needs to take a look at. The title of it is an LNC contact form called, "We Need to Stop Escalating Tensions." There's very, very important information in there. Thank you.
It's out of order. This is out of order.
Yeah, all right.
The chair allowed me. Thank you.
It's, okay. Let's, uh, let's do this. Uh, Mr. Rodsepp, you are in the speaking queue on this amendment. Uh, Mr. Rodsepp, you are recognized. I believe that's the last person on this amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I understand the spirit of this, uh, and I agree with the spirit of this. But I believe that we have already headed in the direction of not hiring outside organizations. Uh, I would suggest hiring a lawyer and not a private investigator because a private investigator is basically just a legal stalker. But, uh, a team of lawyers, uh, would be what I would like to see on this, uh, to get a fair and impartial result.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Rodsepp. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this amendment?
What is the amendment on the table? Because I am thoroughly lost at this point.
No problem. The amendment is that anyone selected must be a member in good standing of the National Party for a minimum of the last five years.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, is this an amendment to the other amendment? Because we never voted on the other amendment.
The other amendment was, was withdrawn without objection.
Okay, gotcha.
We went back to the main motion, and now we are amending the main motion.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Um, yeah, I'm going to, um, vote this down. And when it's voted down, I'm going to re, reintroduce the amendment that was withdrawn without objection. That was perfectly fine. We need to vet our, we need to vet our candidates, and that will solve it. And as far as this going to an outside firm, since it keeps coming in, even though it's not really on the table, I think I should be allowed to speak to it. There's a lot of history and culture here that are very important, like Oregon, Arizona, the way our judicial committee works, that I think will be absolutely lost with an outside firm. And I think we've got some really, really, really good members. I know I've heard some of the suggestions, um, of people, and I think we can do this.
Ms. Harlos, does anyone else want to speak to this amendment?
Yes, I'd like to, Mr. Chair.
I believe that's
Mr. Chair, my hand is up.
I, I am so sorry, guys. I
I'll, I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Longstreth. That's no problem.
Mr. Harris, um, can you tell me whose hands are up currently?
Uh, I see Mr. Nana's hand up. I'm not sure if that's an artifact or if that is.
So I can line for the main motion. Ignore me.
Okay, so that is being ignored. And then I see Mr. Bowen and Mr. Longstreth.
Okay. Mr. Bowen, are you speaking for or against?
Uh, I have a, actually I have a question concerning
Go ahead.
Again, does, would this amendment actually preclude us from appointing a non-libertarian party member to the board, to the committee?
It's not the way I read it. Now, I, uh, Mr. Longstreth, would you, was that your intent to exclude non-libertarian party members?
Well, so here, here's the crossroads, and that touches a little bit on my speaking point. So I, I'll be brief, and, and I'll just say, yes, the way I worded the amendment, that would be the effect because it requires a minimum of five years in the party to serve on our investigation. I have more to comment on that when it's my turn to speak.
Uh, I, I yield.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowen. Uh, Mr. Longstreth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my thoughts are, are this. If we have, we have two choices in my mind that are the most agreeable. And, and one of those is, is we keep it inside the house. We rely on the history of this party. We rely on people who have been around, who understand the nuances, who, who at least to some degree understand the struggles that happened in Oregon, um, and, and that sort of thing. And, and we rely on them. And that would require five years of being in this party as an estimate. I mean, within five years, I would expect you would have at least heard about Oregon once. And, and so that is why, where that line comes from. The other option, if this is voted down, is I would be very much in favor of hiring an outside firm or PI or hiring somebody independent of this LNC. But I, I just don't see how we can let anybody be on this committee. And I want some sort of a guideline for this LNC when we get to the next step this evening of trying to populate these names. So either, either we choose now, it's got to be people older than five years in the party, or we shoot that down, in which case I would be very supportive of hiring a PI or, or somebody else not within the party. But we have a choice to make. Which avenue do we want to go? So when you vote for this amendment, that, that would be the consideration that I would ask that you, you take into, take into account before casting that vote.
Thank you, Mr. Longstreth. Um, I still see Mr. Bowen's hand up. I assume that's an artifact. Okay, and then
It is, I'm sorry.
That is no problem. Mr. Nana is, uh, for the main motion. Uh, is there anyone else that wants to speak to this amendment? I'm not seeing or hearing anyone. Uh, therefore, we will move to a vote. I believe I'm not going to get away with this, but is there objection to the amendment?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I object.
Then, Ms. Harlos, would you please call the roll? Is any, is everyone, everyone's caught up on what we're voting on here? Adding a sentence to the end of the first paragraph that reads, "Anyone selected must be a member in good standing of the National Party for a minimum of the last five years." Madam Secretary, we're ready. I am
Okay, certainly. Um, Ms. Bill U.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen.
Pass.
Ms. Eppke.
Yes.
Oh, I put that in the wrong spot. Forgive me. Mr. Hagan.
I abstain.
I am passing. Mr. Hewitt.
I, I say no.
Ms. Hogarth.
Yes.
Mr. Longstreth.
Yes.
Mr. Nana.
No.
Mr. Nikala.
No, let's just get to the vote.
Mr. Phillips.
Abstain.
Mr. Rodsepp.
No.
Ms. Sarwark.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. Lucini.
Yes.
I'm going to the passes. The first pass was Mr. Bowen with a vote of six to five. Did you hear me, Mr. Bowen?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I'm going to vote no.
Lord have mercy, this is a lot of fun. It's now a vote of six to six. And I really hate to do this to you, Mr. Chair, but I am voting yes, which makes it seven to six.
Um, hmm. Okay, um.
If, if you don't vote, it passes. If you do vote yes, it still passes, but you probably just shouldn't vote. And if you vote no, it ties and fails.
Correct. Uh, I am not going to vote.
Seven to six. To two. There's a two abstentions.
All right. So seven to six, the amendment passes. Uh, the sentence is added to the end of the mo, of the first paragraph. And we are now back at the main motion as amended. Mr. Nana, you still have your hand up? Do you want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of, it kind of precludes me from doing what I wanted to do. So I'm just going to call the question on the main motion.
Second it.
Okay, there's a motion for calling the question in a second, or not a motion, but calling question and a second. Is there objection to calling the question? I'm not hearing any objection to calling the question on the main motion. So um, I'll try this. Is there objection to the main motion as amended?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there, I, there is objection. Then, Madam Secretary, will you please take the, uh, roll? Take the vote.
Ms. Bill U.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen.
Still thinking. Pass.
Ms. Eppke.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
I shall vote yes. Mr. Hewitt.
I will abstain. My region is against any kind of investigation since it's a moot point now. Everything seems to be back where it was before.
Ms. Hogarth.
Yes.
Mr. Longstreth.
Ms. Hewitt brings up a good point. I abstain.
Mr. Nana.
No.
Mr. Nikala.
Yes, investigate the corruption, yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rodsepp. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Sarwark.
I'm going to agree with, uh, Mr. Longstreth and Mr. Hewitt, and I'll abstain.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, pass for a second.
Mr. Lucini.
I'm thinking I'm going to pass for a second.
Okay, I'm going back to the first pass. The votes right now are eight in favor, one opposed, three abstentions. Mr. Bowen.
No.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, that puts me back to, um, Mr. Smith.
Oh, vote no.
And Mr. Lucini. We're at eight to four.
Um, so it doesn't matter how I vote.
Only for the record.
I'm going expressly abstain.
And, Mr. Chair, we have eight in favor, two opposed, five express abstentions.
Okay, the chair will not vote. Uh, the motion passes eight to two to five. Um, and now we are back at our generic agenda, which I have lost the notes on exactly how that was worded, but I
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, there's been a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second for a motion to adjourn. Is there objection to adjourn?
Yes.
I object.
Okay, there is multiple objections to adjournment. I believe then we just go to a vote. Ms. Harlos, uh, can you call the roll on adjournment?
Um, one moment. I think when the adjournment closes the assembly, you are allowed to debate, but I was clearing out my ballot, and I need to look up my Roberts unless Mr. Brown is here.
Point of parliamentarian inquiry.
Go ahead.
If we object to this adjournment, will we move immediately on to the, because the motion expresses that we would move on to immediately vote on the three members of the committee, would it be in order to move on to those votes at that time? Or would we be at the orders of the day in adjournment regardless?
Um, the orders of the day are discussion of the latest, uh, happenings in the Libertarian Party of New Hampshire affiliate, I believe. At least that's a summary version, which is very open and open to anyone making any motion regarding that.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Brown.
Good morning, Mr. Brown.
Regarding the question by Ms. Harlos, um, adjourning from this does not, does not, um,
Not debatable.
In the existence of the, of the, the assembly, just simply ends this, this meeting, just like any other adjournment.
I, I also, I also have a point of inquiry.
Okay, uh, the point of inquiry. I, I can't see who's making it, but go ahead.
It's, it's Mr. Smith.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
If we were to not adjourn and start working on, uh, these three positions for this ad hoc committee, are the people who would be nominated for that on this call to be vetted? Because if we're going to nominate them and vet them and vote on them tonight, I mean, probably going to take a while, so, so.
Mr. Smith, I, I cannot answer that question. I do see that we have 181 people here, of which, uh, you know, 17 or so. 16 of them are us, handful of staff, Mr. Brown, et cetera. But I, I can't speak for anyone who may be nominated and whether or not they're here.
I have a suggestion, Mr. Chair. But there are other people ahead of me, uh, Mr. Valente and Mr. Lucini.
I, I believe that we have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, you're correct.
On the floor. So, and, and I apologize. I know that adjourning final and adjourning to another meeting are two different things. Which one was the debatable one? Are we debating?
This is not debatable.
That's what I thought. So, Madam Har, uh, Madam Secretary, Ms. Harlos, uh, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bill U.
No.
Mr. Bowen.
No.
Ms. Eppke.
No.
Mr. Hagan.
No.
I shall vote no. Mr. Hewitt.
Emphatic, yes.
Ms. Hogarth.
Yes.
Mr. Longstreth.
No.
Mr. Nana.
Yes.
Mr. Nikala.
No.
Mr. Phillips.
Abstain.
Mr. Rodsepp.
Yes.
Ms. Sarwark.
No.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. Lucini.
No.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have five yeses and nine nos.
Okay, and the chair will not vote. The motion fails to adjourn. We are back to the item of business that we were called for, which is discussions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Furrow.
I just want to let you know that I am going to be leaving the meeting temporarily. I will announce when I'm back.
You said you will or will not be returning?
I, I am going to try to return.
Okay, thank you.
I was really hoping for the adjournment. Bye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I heard Ms. Harlos first, so we'll go with her and go ahead.
Um, I have a suggestion for how to proceed.
Okay.
Um, I would think it would be appropriate for LNC members tonight to make nominations. Um, and we just note them all down. Then those same LNC members can invite, and, and we also set a new meeting. And these LNC members can invite their nominees to come to that meeting to be vetted, and we choose them at that meeting.
I, I, okay.
I just have a brief procedural note.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Harlos.
If, if my alternate David is available to step in, I need to step out for a, a variable amount of time. Could be 10 minutes, could be half hour.
I'm good.
Mr. Valente, you're, you're in the driver's seat, Mr. Valente. All right, uh, Mr. Harris, can you tell me, there are three names I see hands up, and I apologize. Uh, who was, uh, next in line?
I have the order as Mr. Lucini, Mr.
I have the order as Mr. Lucchini, Mr. Nikala, and then Mr. Longstrath.
Perfect, then, uh, Mr. Lucchini, you are recognized.
I actually was just trying to find out with this, uh, Longstrath, uh, so I'm just gonna pass my time.
Okay. Um, who was, uh, was it Mr. Nikala was next, I believe?
That is what I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Nikala, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I, I, I do think that we could certainly move forward with, um, nominations for another meeting. I do understand that Mr. Tom, Tom Arnold has agreed to be on this, uh, committee. So at this time, I would ask, if there's a second, uh, I would think it's appropriate to move forward with a motion to appoint Tom Arnold as one of those members to the committee.
Okay, I, it is in order. Uh, there has been a motion to appoint Mr. Tom Arnold as one of the members of the investigative committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Valente seconds that motion. Uh, we are now in discussion on the appointment of Tom Arnold to the committee.
Objection.
And, okay, I see your hand, Ms. Harlos. Um, I, I also, uh, Mr. Harris, can you tell me? I see hands going up, and I already had Nana, Longstrath, and Valente in the queue on the main motion. Can you tell me what the current queue looks like?
The current order that I have is Longstrath, Nana, Valente, Lucchini, Hagan, Adams.
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt. Uh, wouldn't it be, uh, in order to take multiple nominations at once? That way we don't do this piecemeal one at a time and get bogged down?
Second.
Mr. Nana, it is, it is in order to take them one at a time as a group. There's plenty of ways this could be done.
Well, I, I'm asking because I would like to nominate someone, but, uh, I don't know, they are here in the chat, and I, and I don't know, you know, I don't wanna trample on the, uh, Mr. Nikala nominating Mr. Arnold, that's all. Just trying to be courteous.
If I may make a suggestion, Mr. Nana, that once we dispense with, uh, the nomination of Mr. Arnold, that you make that motion at that time.
Certainly.
Uh, Mr. Chair, do you mind if I speak to my motion?
Uh, not at all, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand we might not have three people tonight, or we may or may not, I don't know. But I figure this, this, the closer we can get to that three, and if we can get to the three tonight, then by God, let's do it. Um, I know Mr. Arnold, he is an impartial figure in the Libertarian Party of Tennessee, in the Libertarian Party, he's been around for a very long time. I consider him a wise man, a very impartial man. He's not a, a caucus member, to my knowledge. Um, he is a member of the Ju- Judicial Committee, um, just wanna point that out there. I don't see that, and I've spent some time contemplating whether or not that might, may or may not be a problem. I don't see that as a potential issue, because if the JC were to take this up, then the members of the committee that are JC are gonna find out this information anyway, so it would hopefully be impartial regardless. So with that said, I think piecemealing them together one at a time might be the most appropriate, since I know that we had some questions as to what guidelines we wanna hold them to, whether or not they're X, Y, and Z, and I think instead of a slate, going one at a time might be the most appropriate. So if we have our nominations, and they've already agreed, and now Mr. Arnold has already agreed, I would like to put him forward to be a member of this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nikala. Um, Mr. Longstrath, did you wanna speak to this nomination?
I mean, I've been wanting to speak on many things, but I'll go ahead and seize this opportunity, since it's the first time in a while. Uh, so I will go ahead and, uh, if, if we wanna do this piecemeal, uh, I'm fine with that. We are currently in a motion, so I'm not gonna fight against that. Uh, so I, I think Mr. Arnold is a fantastic nomination. I would suggest for our other two nominations, perhaps, though, we open up for nominations, and then, uh, we do maybe a fill-in-the-blank or something like that to appoint the others. Uh, but that said, um, I am curious, Mr. Chair, are there other speakers in the queue on Mr. Arnold specifically? And if not, I would like to call a question, but if there are, I will not do that, so I leave that to your, your prerogative there.
Thank you, Mr. Longstrath. I think so. Um, so let me, let me double check.
I can't hear you, Ken.
You guys can't hear me?
I ca- I can hear you.
Uh-oh.
Ken, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you. I, uh, on my app.
Phillips's headsets may have run out of batteries. That happens. Bluetooth, the joys. All right. Uh, Mr. Nana, did you wanna speak to this, uh, particular, uh-
My hand is up to make a nomination. No, sir.
And my hand was up right from the beginning.
Let me do this, let me get, uh, Mr. Valente, if he wants to speak.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Valente, you're recognized, and then, uh, Ms. Harlos, you will go immediately after Valente?
Okay.
Yes, I, uh, can, I can't find anybody who is better to serve on this committee than, than Tom Arnold, uh, someone who loves this party. Someone who is a, uh, a force of good in this party, and, uh, uh, the only concern I do have is the, the judicial, uh, judicial committee, piece where, you know, if it, if it does end up back in the judicial committee, then, uh, whether they would have to recuse themselves or not. Uh, and perhaps, you know, I know that Jim Turney's name was brought up as well, uh, you know, maybe not put two members of the judicial, judicial committee on there. But anyway, Tom Arnold's a fantastic libertarian, definitely needs to be on this board. I yield.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valente, and Ms. Harlos.
Okay, um, I repeat all of the compliments of Tom Arnold. That's the reason he's on the judicial committee. Liberty Santa is loved by all. But the fact is, there's not just one JC thing he might be impacted by, there might be two. Um, we all know what the other issue is, in which there's an automatic right to JC appeal, and I do not think it's fair to insist for this committee that I be denied my right to be heard by Tom Arnold, which is why I voted for him on the judicial committee. So even recusing himself doesn't solve the problem for me, because anything in this investigation could impinge upon some other things that are before him. We voted for the JC for a reason, let's let them be the JC. His competence is without question, but there are a lot of people that I don't wanna jump ahead to say names, but I can name a lot that I think a lot of you would go, oh, I didn't even think of that person. Second, I object to taking people out of order, it prejudices other nominees. It's, it's not the right way to do things, even if it's procedurally allowed.
Thank you, Ms. Harlos. Uh, Mr. Harris, can you tell me who else is in the queue, uh, at this time? I see Valente and Nana's hands up. Who is after, uh, those two?
Uh, after Mr. Nana and Mr. Valente, I have Mr. Lucchini, Mr. Hagan, and Ms. Adams.
Chi, Hagan, and Adams. All right, we will recognize them in that order. Mr. Lucchini?
I have never spoken more in a meeting than this one. Um, so, um, I'm going to, I, I know Arnold's, uh, by reputation, I think it's, um, good. Um, I do think that I find myself in agreement with Ms. Harlos, that, um, we have plenty of people to choose for, from, in this. I have two people that I would like to nominate. Uh, they're not in the chat, I need to have a conversation with them. I think that nominating people now, um, I believe that we should adjourn and, and have another meeting where we can go talk to our various people and see if they're willing to serve, uh, and then come back, and then do all the nominations en masse. So I think this, this prejudi- this prejudice is the, the, um, the process of selecting these, or at least nominating these, these nominees. So I would vote against this measure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucchini. Uh, Mr. Hagan?
Um, yeah, similar to what Mr. Lucchini's mentioned, I, I mean, Tom Arnold, probably on top of my list, I'll pick him for him. But I'd rather have the process of, we find out who all the nominees, I, I know of another person who is willing to serve, his name is not mentioned yet. I'd like to know everybody that be nominated, and then we do a vote instead of a piecemeal vote.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Uh, Ms. Adams?
Yeah, I think the, the only thing different I would wanna add to what Mr. Hagan and Mr. Lucchini said is, I realize that there is a, there is a need for expediency here. I think we all agree with that. I think that's why we went ahead and passed, uh, the original motion to form this committee. We, we don't wanna lose any more time that has already been lost. At the same time, I think, um, there's, there's something to be said for not also rushing to fill these people this quickly. Maybe we do need some time to explore options. It's really important that we get these committee appointments right. And I love Tom Arnold, and I think Tom Arnold is absolutely a wonderful choice for this. Um, even, even saying that, we still have two other positions, assuming we all decided tonight that Tom was the guy. Um, I would really like to take, like for us to take just a little bit of time. I, I don't wanna lose a ton of time on this, guys. I don't wanna see us dealing with this in two weeks or three weeks, but I do think it's important that we get these appointments really, really right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Adams. Um, Mr. Harris, can you tell me who is next in the queue?
Uh, yes, I believe Mr. Phillips and then Mr. Bowen.
I, I, I don't wanna jump these people, but I am now actually trying to speak on this, and I've had my hand up throughout the whole discussion, so.
My, I don't know why my hand's up, so you can take my turn.
All right, so what I'll do is I will recognize Mr. Bowen and then recognize Mr. Nana.
Uh, I'll yield to Mr. Nana and then speak afterwards, if that's in order.
That would be fine. Mr. Nana, go ahead.
All right, so, uh, obviously I just made an attempt to adjourn earlier. I'm not sure wha- what the difference between why we're adjourning now and why I tried to adjourn 10 minutes ago is, but, um, here's the thing, uh, I wanna remind everybody, it takes five days to call a meeting of this committee, so if we're gonna have another meeting, we're gonna have to wait on this another five days at minimum, and that's-
We could adjourn to a date that is very soon.
Sure, we could do that, uh, I suppose, I didn't think of that. Um, I, I'm, I'm actually, you know what, I actually think I'm changing my position. Uh, we need to do something tonight. Um, you know, this is, I, I, I mean, I know not all of us expected there to be a restriction of five-year membership, but, uh, yeah, this is the third meeting on this. We owe our membership something, a- and I'm honestly not gonna kick this can down the road anymore, so, no, no. We need to do something tonight.
Okay. All right.
Chair, this is Mr. Brown.
Yes, Mr.
Just wanted to say, Ms. Harlos was correct when she said you, you can set another adjourned meeting. You don't necessarily have to go through the process of, of setting another special meeting.
That is correct, and, uh, you know, this is becoming a regular thing. We meet every night at 9:00 PM, so. Um, the, uh, Mr. Bowen, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, my feeling on selection of, uh, nominees for this committee, uh, I wanna see all the nominees first before I decide to put on that committee. That's number one. Number two, I had a feeling this was going to happen. Um, I will tell you that I have at least one state in my region, maybe others, that are very upset that we did not go the independent route, that we are nominating any LNC members, and they do not consider this formal investigation to be independent at this, at this moment. So I just wanna let people know, you're gonna be hearing from at least one, maybe more of the states in my region about this, uh, investigation at this point. Uh, granted that, I will get back to you on that. Um, but I'm not voting for anybody until I know what the entire list of the nominees are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. All right, uh, where are we now? Uh, Mr. Harris, that was the end of the list that I had. Does anyone else have their hand up to speak on the nomination, and I guess appointment, actually, of Tom's committee?
I, you're recognized, Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Nikala.
I propose a substitute motion to allow 24 hours from the passage of this motion to make nominations via the LNC list, and for those nominees to be placed in an OPA vote, where the top three vote-getters will be placed in the committee.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. I did not get all that wording written down.
So 24 hours from the passage of this motion will be the end of nominations, at which point the secretary shall, create an OPA vote, where the LNC members shall vote, and the top three vote-getters shall be placed on the committee.
How long shall the OPA vote be open for?
Let's say four, let's say 24 hours.
That's been way too short in the past, just FYI, it's-
Then-
72 hours, perhaps?
72, well, 72 hours unless all members vote.
Can I make a suggestion that we make it Monday at noon for the nominations, because a lot of people are out of town for the, the Father's Day weekend? Noon on Monday for the end of, uh, nominations, and then 72 hours after that for the vote.
I'm amendable if the second is amendable. Without objection.
Yes, that's fine. That's fine with me.
I have one other point of inquiry.
Uh, Madam Secretary, I'm trying to get exact wording on the, uh, amendment for the moment. I apologize. I think what I'm hearing-
My understanding would be that we would close nominations noon on Monday, and then allow the OPA vote to be open for 72 hours. That would make it Thursday at noon, it would close.
Okay, hold on one second. Monday, 6:20 at noon, what time zone, noon?
Uh, Eastern.
We do everything Pacific time zone that is standard on the list.
Pacific.
Except for OPA vote, which goes by Mountain, that's the only exception.
Well, that's, but that's part of the, that's part of the motion, is OPA vote.
Well, OPA vote's always Mountain, because it's my account. I, I can't change that.
But you can make it effective, so it actually does end at noon Pacific time, right?
No, it asks, if I'm gonna have it end at a specific time, it's tied to my time zone. If you wanna trust me to manually end it somewhere around noon Pacific time, I can do that.
Why don't we give it one-hour grace period? So, uh, nominations end, and then we do 49 hours later, the vote closes.
I thought it was 72.
All right, sorry, it's, it's, fine, add one hour. I'm sorry, it's late.
It is, again.
Body is amendable to that.
I wanna point out. This is how I'm going tonight, so.
Don't do that.
It's, uh, anyhow.
What, point of information, Ken?
Yes.
Hey, uh, I heard you say 6:20 is the date. That's actually 6:21 on the, uh-
Thank you. I'm trying to write-
How about we have a contest, where the people who vote first win a certain amount of money, and it goes down?
All right, so I have, nominations will be open until Monday, June 21st at noon Pacific time. And an OPA vote shall be open for 72 hours?
Correct. And the top three vote-getters will be placed in the committee.
And by top three, are we doing, uh, which, which form of voting, approval?
Yes.
Select as many as you like?
Correct.
Yes.
Did, to the committee, all right. I wanna, now that we've workshopped the motion, I wanna read this and make sure this is the, the correct motion. Um, nominations will be open until Monday, June 21st at noon Pacific time, and an OPA vote shall be open for 70, oh, see, that's still not right. After which?
Mr. Chair, point of information?
Yes, Ms. Adams.
What is the process to verify that anyone who's nominated is eligible per the motion that passed? Specifically in regards to the five-year membership? What's the credentialing process for that? Who's gonna be in charge of that? To make sure that we're not getting anybody on our ballot who is not eligible?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know, Ms. Adams.
Can I make a suggestion, Ken?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Nikala.
I would, uh, I would, I would ask that our membership people, or Tyler Harris, could look into our records, and if that record is not available, then we'd have to ask the state chair of that state to look into membership rolls for that state.
Uh, Mr. Nikala, I believe the motion now states that they must have been a national party member for the last-
Okay.
So that would only be national.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Staff is gonna need some time to do this? So why don't we, why don't we make the close of the vote 6:00 PM, three days later? That gives them, uh, s- I can't do math, so it's five hours or something to vet everybody who comes in at the last minute?
Okay.
I mean, I-
That would be sufficient for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. That's exactly the question I was gonna ask. So that is sufficient?
I believe that would be sufficient, contingent upon the number of nominees, but assuming that that's within reasonable ranges, that should be sufficient time.
All right, so now we're at nominations open until Monday, June 21st, at noon Pacific time. Staff will.
How do I submit a nomination? Sorry, I don't mean to, I mean, I'm totally unclear how we would even be submitting these nominations. Do I email the chair? Do I email the secretary?
But it said to the list, I thought the motion said to the list.
Why don't we just create a thread?
Yes, a thread would be the easiest way.
My only concern with that is that sometimes people send resumes with PII in them that's not really looking for public distribution.
Make it to the internal list, then.
We could definitely do that, and we can then share the names that are not, that have been nominated and approved prior to the ballot being open. We could do that. All right, staff will validate. Okay, noon Pacific time is going to be 3:00 P.M. Eastern. So that, then, Mr. Harris asked the question, if we give you, if we close the nominations at 3:00 P.M. Eastern Time on Monday, when would it be reasonable to expect that staff could have verified everyone?
I will personally be available at 3:00 P.M. Eastern Time to do so, if that is the will of this body, and.
I will make myself available.
And depending on the number of nominees, it will take us a varying amount of time to do it, but it should, it should go fairly quickly. Not longer than a few hours.
Mr. Chair, has this substitute motion been seconded, or are we still, are we, I mean, I know we're not in a committee of the whole. I'm just kind of confused with what we're doing right now.
I am trying to get us one motion to get out of here, is where we're at right now.
Yes, the energy was seconded.
And I do think it was seconded, but it was flawed, so.
Well, that's my point. I'm totally lost. We can't workshop a motion on the floor like this. This is not a committee of the whole.
I agree.
It is, it is not, well, technically, but as long as there's no objection, we can move forward.
I agree, Mr. Nana. The point is well taken. We are technically acting out of order right now, trying to get out of here. What I am hearing is basically a motion to amend that we would have nominations open until Monday, June 21st, at noon Pacific time. Staff will validate the eligibility of the nominees upon close of nominations.
Why don't we just do this the right way? I move that we enter a committee of the whole.
Okay, there's been a motion to move into the committee. There is a second. Is there objection to moving into committee of the whole? I am hearing no objection. That's cool, great. Now we can talk even more freely, so that's good. By the way, seconds no longer. In a committee of the whole, seconds, motions do not require seconds, just so everyone knows. It's a thing.
Can we just finish reading this? I think we're all in agreement.
Right, okay. Nominations open until Monday, June 21st, at noon Pacific time. Staff will validate eligibility of the nominees upon the close of nomination of nominations. And then, after which, an OPA vote shall be open for 72 hours, and the top three via approval voting shall be appointed to the committee. Does that sound right to everybody? Got a better way to do it?
Well, I just, I don't know that I'd limit them to close of nominations. If Tyler's sitting there in the office at 10 o'clock, and he can get 10 names out of the way. Yeah, well, I don't know that I'd limit him on verification to the closing nominations, is all I'm saying. I don't, I don't think the motion says that. It just says that, once he's done validating, we go forward with the vote. I believe he can start validating as soon as nominations come in.
I see, Mr., I actually do see what Mr. Phillips is saying. All right. Here's what I need to do. That's where, that's where it is. So I broke the paragraph in the wrong place, Mr. Phillips. The second sentence, staff will validate eligibility of the nominees, period. Upon close of nominations, an OPA vote shall be open for 72 hours. I'll see, that's still not right. Yeah, upon close.
How about upon close of validation?
Yes. On close of validation. Out of work. An OPA vote shall be open for 72 hours, and the top three via approval voting shall be appointed to the committee. I see, Mr. Lucchini. I agree with that, that hand gesture, sir. Anybody, is any, is everyone good with that wording?
Could you read it one more time, Ken?
Yes, and by the way, we're in a committee of the whole. You do not have to raise hands here. I mean, you can just talk, just in case people are raising hands, looking to be recognized. Committee of the whole is much more free-flow. Nominations are open until Monday, June 21st, at noon Pacific time. Staff will validate eligibility of the nominees. Upon close of the validation, an OPA vote shall be open for 72 hours, and the top three via approval voting shall be appointed to the committee.
I'm aligned with that.
Sounds good to me.
Does anyone have a problem with that? Any tweaks, anything, anything? Going once, going twice. All right, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to rise from the committee of the whole.
Yep, second.
There's a move and a second. Is there objection to rising from the committee of the whole? I am not hearing an objection. All right, so with no objection, we are now back at the regular session. And if someone would be so kind as to move the work product of our committee of the whole.
Oh, so move the work product.
So we have a motion and a second. I'm going to reread the motion, so that we know what we're talking about. Nominations are open until Monday, June 21st, at noon Pacific time. Staff will validate eligibility of the nominees. Upon close of the validation, an OPA vote shall be open for 72 hours, and the top three via approval voting shall be appointed to the committee. That is the motion on the floor. I'm just going to ask, do we need any discussion about this? I am not hearing any discussion. So I'm going to ask if there is objection to passing this motion. I'm going to ask one more time.
I object on that. I want a roll call. I want to request a roll call.
Mr. Bowen objects, wants a roll call. That is within your rights, sir, not a problem. Madam Secretary, can you read the roll? Let's do this thing.
Ms. Bill, you?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Abstain.
Ms. Eppkin?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
I shall abstain. Mr. Hewitt?
I will abstain for the previously stated reasons.
Ms. Hogarth?
She is not returned.
Miss, Mr. Valenti?
Yes.
Mr. Longstrath?
I will abstain.
Mr. Nana?
Going to pass.
Mr. Nikala?
I vote aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Roudseth?
Yes.
Ms. Arwark?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Smith?
What's the count?
Eight in favor, zero opposed, four abstentions.
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Lucchini?
Yes.
Cam, going back to who am I going back to? Mr. Nana?
I will vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, it is 11. Yes, zero, no, four abstentions.
Only 15, Madam Secretary. I just want to verify.
It totals 15.
Because I'm, I am the number 16. I will not vote.
I move to adjourn.
Yep, well, let me, real quick, that means that the motion passes 11 to 0 to 4. Thank you all for this. There's been a motion to adjourn by Mr. Lucchini. Is there a second?
Second.
There are multiple seconds. Is there objection to adjourning at this time?
Objection, sorry.
Ms. Arwark objects to adjourning at this time. Okay, as I recall, we do not debate this, so let's do a roll call on adjournment.
Give me one moment, as I'm clearing the ballot. Ms. Bill, you?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Are we voting on, I'm sorry?
Adjourning?
Adjournment, okay, yes.
Ms. Eppkin?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Hogarth? Mr. Valenti?
Yes.
Mr. Longstrath?
Yes.
Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Nikala?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Abstain.
Mr. Roudseth?
Yes.
Ms. Arwark?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lucchini?
I wish progress rules wasn't this way. I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we have 11 in favor, two opposed, two abstentions.
All right, and I will not vote. We have 11 to 2 to 2. The motion to adjourn passes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for spending your Father's Day weekend with the committee and doing this important business.
Thank you. Good night.
Before we shut off the Zoom, does anybody want to stick around and talk about this, because like I said earlier, I don't think this is going to get done over email very effectively. You know, and I'd rather not have backroom deals and calls between certain members, and that's just where we just came from.
Let me ask Mr. Harris, since the official business is closed, can we shut off the live stream, please?
Yes.